Welcome to Betsy Lane High School, our February regular scheduled meeting. I'd like the record to show that all school board members are present. I'd also like to remind you that there's a clipboard up front if anybody would like to sign up and speak. There's also printed agendas on the table if anybody would like to come up and get one so they'd be able to follow along. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of individual silence as a reflection of why Thank you. And the adoption of the agenda, Dr. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have placed in front of you all. Can I? I'm not picking on this guy, this guy's great. He's the brains behind all this operation.
You may have to turn something down.
Here, I just bragged on him.
This phone made him run off.
Check, check, check.
Check.
Thank you, sir. In all seriousness, Madam Chair, our technology department is outstanding. I place in front of you all two items to add to the agenda for the lack of you consider adding to the agenda. The first one is item CC, which is Consider/Approve Change Order for Athletic Scoreboards at Floyd Central High School. As you know, we bid these twice and KDE recommended rather than bid them again that this process would expedite the work. Item DD, Consider/Approve Updated Revised BG-1 (16-143) for Betsy Lane High School to reflect change order in the construction contingencies and CM fee per Kentucky Department of Education. Basically, that's just a paperwork changing some numbers around, no additional funding on the Betsy Lane project. So I get that to them in the morning and not delay the project.
All right. Need a motion to adopt the agenda? Dr. Chandler, I need a second.
Second.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Number two, Spotlight on Student Staff, Community Achievements, and Report on Student Work. Good evening. I always like it when we have this many recognitions because we have so many great things going on in our district. Tonight, we want to start with something that has not happened in Floyd County schools since 2003. We have had some students place at the regional wrestling competition and they too qualified to be at the state competition. So I thought that was amazing when I found out that it had been that long. So tonight, first, we want to recognize this young man. He placed fifth in 182 weight class, Mr. Jason Ratliff from Prestonburg High School. Can I have the coach step up, please, too? Can we get one more, get the coach in it, please?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Coach, if you'll just stay here. Next, we have Chase Stevens from Prestonburg High School. He qualifies for state. He's also from Prestonburg High School and he qualifies for state. Now, while they're getting one over there, I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna talk about some more people from Prestonburg, actually. This team has won for over a decade. I've lost count of how many times that they have won the regional championship in archery. We have, and they are really kind of a combined team because they go to meets together. So it is Adams Middle School Archery and Prestonburg High School Archery, but together, they are Black Cat Archery. So I would like for the archers to please come up, and I know at least two of the coaches are here, Coach Sherman Holliday and Kristy Masser. I don't think I saw Norm anywhere. Is he here?
No, he's not.
So if we could please have Prestonburg High School Archery and Adams Middle School Archery to come up.
Uh, probably seventy. We've got some dance, chair, everything else come and go. So actually, I'll keep up with that. So if you do anything else, come back, we're always here.
Now, I know we have McKenna Wireman, right? She is the middle school regional champion for girls. And Sherman, was it Reese McCoy from Prestonburg High School?
Yes.
Was the all-around female shooter of the day. And I can't remember the...
Christopher Little.
Christopher Little was all-around male shooter of the day from Prestonburg High School. So, yeah.
We haven't had the official public media signing, but we have had three of our seniors this year sign with U-Pike to shoot college archery next year.
Four are also on the team, so we'll have a couple more.
Next, we have another group. A couple of weekends ago, this group went to Frankford and competed in the Kentucky Dance Coached Organization State Competition. They placed first in the state in prop, second in palm, and second in jazz. So tonight, we want to recognize Adams Middle School Dance Cats. The Dance Cats are coached by Melissa Smith. Wow.
Are they going back for us?
No. I can do it automatically, yes. And they smile perfect, too.
Yep, and they've done it the other way, too.
These young ladies put in a lot of work. This is young men this time. They also went to downstate and competed in a tournament and with about seventy-eight teams. And in the first round, they played Mullenberg, who was on a twenty-seven game winning streak, but they beat them. And then they made it to the final four where they played Clay County, who was supposed to be number one in the state, and they beat them, too. And then, in the finals, they got up against Meese. And Meese had won this tournament the last two years in a row, but they didn't win it this year because the Adams Middle School Basketball Team Eighth Grade State Champs of...now, I've lost my title here.
State champs is good enough.
State champs is good enough. Kentucky Basketball Academy State Champ, Eighth Grade. Coach Bud, Duddy Hawkins. When we planned this a couple of months ago, we did not realize that tonight would be the night that Betsy Lane High School Girls would be playing in the regional tournament. So tonight, we have two groups from Betsy Lane that one of the sponsors is going to accept on their behalf because they're all at the basketball game. But in October, we had some students who came to the early childhood event down at Big Sandy, and these students helped set up, they welcomed, they registered parents, they served food, they cleaned up, whatever they needed to do. And we just wanted them to know that we really appreciate their service to the early childhood folks. And that would be the Betsy Lane High School National Honor Society and the Betsy Lane High School Beta Club. Ms. Pat Hackler is going to attend on their behalf. This last part, we're gonna talk about some of our staff, some of our very hard-working staff. I think to set this up, you need to know that the state average for kindergarten readiness for preschool is forty-nine point five percent, but in Floyd County, the average is seventy-two point six percent. And the state average for head start being kindergarten-ready is forty-eight percent. But again, in Floyd County, we're a little bit higher, and it's seventy-eight point eight percent. On top of that, the next ladies that we're recognizing tonight, they are maintaining ninety percent of their students are kindergarten, are college and career-ready. So we want...I'm sorry. They are kindergarten-ready.
Pretty mature.
But I will say, you've gotta be kindergarten-ready before you can start on that road to being college and career-ready.
The first step.
That's the first step, that's exactly right. So tonight, we're going to start with a classroom from Allen Elementary. This classroom has had one hundred percent of their kids ready for kindergarten the last two years in a row. You could say that, they will go. From Stumbo Elementary, this classroom also has, this classroom has been above ninety percent for two years in a row, Ms. Deborah Tackett and Wilma Martin. From Betsy Lane Elementary, April Barowski and Brittany Hancock Tackett, and this classroom Now, I taught high school, and these ladies just absolutely amaze me when they have all those three and four-year-olds in there. I prefer teenagers. Next up, we have from Dev Elementary, Misty Knott and Ramona Stewart, and this class was Now, we have from May Valley Elementary, Ms. Rhonda Begley and Beth Martin, and again, their kids were over ninety, were ninety percent kindergarten-ready. And last but not least, again, from May Valley, we have Ms. Ashley Fatt and Stacy Page, ninety percent ready.
I can personally vouch for them.
So I hope you enjoyed all of our recognition, athletic, community service, and some of our teaching staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say something just a minute? This weekend, we were at the school board convention, and we went through the vendors' section there, and we went to a section from the, they were from Boyd County, and they could not keep singing Anna Shepherd's Prayer, this lady was. So you may know who I'm talking about, but...
Not sure.
Well, whatever. She was talking about what a great preschool head start we had, and about how great you were, and I said, "I remember when she started, and you're exactly right." So congratulations.
And how many peoples? We've been visited by several districts and schools, head start preschool, asking questions.
Yes, and we have several scheduled. We have one coming up in March, but, yeah, from Jasmine County. Yeah, we've had several visits.
And we just recently asked to present a statewide head start, early childhood summit, so just hats off.
Wonderful things going on in Betsy Lane High School.
Now, Report on Student Work by Betsy Lane High School Principal and SCDM Council.
Hello.
Hi. Give everybody time to exit the door.
We'll do it.
Let's see how close I get to this room.
Manners is a bandit here.
Hello, everyone. Georgia Roberts Assistant Principal. As you heard earlier, the vast majority of the Betsy Lane staff and leadership has went to support our girls at the expo, and that's where a lot of our students are, and they felt they wanted to be there. This is Kelly Ackers, site base member. God bless her for showing up with me.
God bless her, she let me in the building.
Hey, the first page is the demographics of the total enrollment of four hundred ninety-nine and nine, one fourteen and ten.
She has signed a clipboard. Is there anybody that wishes to do so before we move on? All right. Anybody, students that wish to address the board? Site base councils? Parents, PTA, PTO? Classified employees? Certified employees? Principals Association? Members of the Board of Education? Dr. Chandler?
I would like to talk to Dr. Webb about the pressure of our high school attendance. Even though high school attendance is compared to other high schools is always low, still is low, but Dr. Webb told me they're working on that. So that was my comment for attendance staff, but I'm just going to comment now, that attendance at Prestonburg High School is always low compared to other high schools. And they're working on that, I think we need to work harder to make sure that why the attendance is so.
Well, when I told Dr. Webb, the question was, "Personnel high schools attendance," and I don't have that data in front of me, but I, they may be the lowest in the county high schools, but our high schools attendance, there's a lot of high schools that would love to have our attendance at Floyd County now. The board charged me nine years ago to work on attendance, and I can tell you that there's lots of the school districts in Kentucky trying to emulate what we do with attendance. So while theirs is lower maybe than other high schools, it's still higher than a lot of high schools in the state of Kentucky, especially in our region. But I'm fairly confident in saying that it's significantly higher than last year at Prestonburg High Schools. But once again, it's just like the issue of getting kids more prepared for college, this is an area that we work every single day, and we continue to work, and we will continue to work.
What, the Ennis Center High School, Southwood High School, and Beshinah High School? Their high school attendance is not higher than Prestonburg.
And I'll check that data, Dr. Webb, I don't have it in front of me, but I don't recall it being significant, like three points or something, but I will check it. But once again, rest assured, we will address it.
See, Ennis Center High School has been wonderful, their attendance is so nice and good. Rest of us, always lower, still completely lower than other high schools.
I saw one of the administrators doing a home visit from Prestonburg the other day, so they're out there trying.
But once again, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but... Laurie's here. Laurie, how many home visits do y'all do?
Several. I mean, it's regular.
All of our family resource centers, our ministry, people cannot believe when they ask me, "Okay, how do you get your attendance up?" They think we cheat. But it's a concerted effort by all the teachers, classified staff. I will bet we have more home visits, our administrators, and our friskies than, you know, people in office, I like to bet lunch. I would bet lunch in any district in East Kentucky. And that's because of the hard work of all of our administrators and staff. While we're still not where we want to be, and your statement's very, very fair, we've really come light years, and we will continue, we won't rest until, Dr. Webb, I know you know, because you say it all the time, if kids aren't in school, they can't learn, right? So we won't rest until we get all of our kids in school.
And I will say, I've noticed for the last few years, Prestonburg High School attendance has gone up. It is consecutively slowly going up, but it is going up.
And I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say they're up about three tenths this year. But I will check it, but we will get after it.
I know, when we come out and participate, like, wait a minute, it has been ninety-one percent attendance, and there are more employees percentage-wise, and kids come only ninety-one percent. So we did very, very good job compared to all of our high schools, Prestonburg.
Yeah, fair point.
Any other school board members? Public comments? All right, we'll move on to number four. Action or Special Reports, Student Learn. A, Receive Attendance and Plan Enrollment and Health Aid Service Report. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Need a motion to receive the report? Dr. Chandler, second by junior. Any opposed? Any comments? Motion passed. Receive Athletic Academic Attendance Report. Anybody have any comments or questions? Need a motion to approve? Dr. Chandler, I need a second.
Second.
Junior, any opposed? Motion passed. Number five, Action or Special Reports, Student Support. Receive Report of Superintendent. Dr. Webb, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Linda.
Need a motion to receive the report? Dr. Chandler, need a second?
I'll second.
Linda, any opposed? Motion passed. B, Receive Utility Report for Betsy Lane High School. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I would call it, I think we did a good job.
Yes.
Last five years, we go every year, we did, rates goes high, but we paying, everybody did a wonderful job.
Yes, Greg is in the maintenance department, is doing a wonderful job. I need a motion to receive the utility report?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Linda, I need a second? Second by junior, any opposed? Motion passed. Receive Construction Manager Architect Progress Report. Dr. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of updates. The job trailer is onsite out front. The bond sale is scheduled for March ninth for the Betsy Lane High School project. Dirt is expected to be moving sometime shortly after the ninth, so definitely between, somewhere between the ninth and March fifteenth, somewhere in there. There's some bureaucracy involved, as soon as we get some improvement documents back to KDE, I sent them an email today asking them to expedite that process. So we're very optimistic we'll get started here any day in the next couple of weeks. The Floyd Central project, the area A, which is the one out front that they allude to all the time, is progressing nicely. I actually visited today, lots of painting going on, tile flying, a lot of finish works beginning in the area A. Area B is the gym cafeteria area. That should all be enclosed within a week. They've now got windows in most of the gym, so within a week, that should be closed so they can get the heat on in there and start some painting. Site work, turning lanes will begin March first. All the curbs should be going in March first, and of course, asphalt plants don't open back up till the end of March, early first of April. Soon as those open up, a base will go down, and the final won't go down until the very end. And lastly, sod should go down early spring in baseball and softball.
What's the projected date of the finish of the Betsy Lane Gym?
It's three hundred and fifty days from the day they start, so our goal is to get in it. I have pushed and pushed and pushed that we play in that gym next year. So it'll be close, but we're gonna push. And we pushed the whole way, we pushed the whole time, it's just the first round of bids set us back about a month.
Yeah.
But the good news is, once again, we got everything. We got the road moved, we got the administrative suite, and by the way, the power company is moving the power lines for us, the big major line, so when we do address the additional support facility, that's gone out of the way. So although it may take a little longer, we got everything.
Good. Any other questions or comments? I need a motion to receive the Construction Manager Architect Progress Report. Junior, need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Linda, any opposed? Motion passed. Move on to number six, Action by Consent. Everybody take a look at those and see if there's anything that you need pulled or discussed. Anything by anyone? Then I need a motion to approve. Dr. Chandler, do you have anything? Okay. Which one? No, nothing? Okay. Then I need a motion to approve A through DD to include the ones that Henry added to the agenda. Junior made a motion, I need a second? Dr. Chandler, second? Any opposed? Motion passed. Moves us to number seven. Jonathan, do we need it?
Executive session.
No executive session, so I need a motion for a German.
No executive session, so I need a motion for a adjournment. Junior made a motion. I need a second. Second by Dr. Chandler, any opposed? Meeting adjourned.